The Finance Committee to order at 6:45 PM. And the Chair will entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would move for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $771,852.76, manual checks in the amount of $98,008.16, payroll and liabilities for October 12th, 2018, and October 25th, 2018, in the amount of $649,296.51, for a total of $1,519,157.43.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other questions or anything to come before the...
I have none, Your Honor.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, no other business then. 6:47, we are adjourned.
I now call the November 6th, 2018, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. And Councilmember Schotz will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here and act as the City Council in behalf of our citizens of Riverton. We would ask that thou would favor us with insight and understanding, that we might do our very best for those individuals. Father bless us with insight. Watch over and protect us. Protect this town and bless its inhabitants. We ask this humbly. Name thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schotz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. I would entertain a motion to excuse Sean Peterson from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and that passes. I do declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda.
They're moved and seconded. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think we should move Items 7, 11, and 12 to after Item 20.
Okay. So we're going to put that executive session and then the discussion ordinance 18-013 and 014 to the end of the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As a motion.
I second that.
That's been seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion is passed, and the amended agenda is adopted. So then, I got to jump a page here. Next item is Communication from the Floor, Citizens' Comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the Council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the Council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Godey. I'm representing the Moxon Lake Challenge Committee and the Addiction Services in Riverton. And so what I'm speaking on tonight is the invitation that I set in front of you. This is the second event that we've hosted, Thanksgiving Dinner for Humanity. And so this year, we're going to do it also in the band shell. And we've got all of our donations already collected. And so we will be hosting this event November 17th, Saturday, from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. We have multiple services in the community that have volunteered to participate with us. And so we'll be having turkey and just the whole Thanksgiving fixings. We have Kentucky Fried Chicken donating, potatoes and gravy, and Trailhead donating the green beans, and Smiths is donating all the turkeys. And we just want to invite community members to participate in serving Thanksgiving dinner to the homeless. And if the weather is poor, Tristine has volunteered the homeless shelter. And so we'll still be near the park and be available to those who are challenged in our community. We want them to know that we care, and we want them to choose healthier choices for themselves. And so we just want to come together as a community and show our love and care for them.
Thank you very much. We're invited to come?
Definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, let me know.
You bet. Thanks, Kelly, for coming. Anybody else? Okay. Consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, October 16th, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, November 6th, 2018, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for November 6th, 2018. The Municipal Court report for the month of October, 2018. A replat for Shab Second Subdivision, Fremont County, Wyoming. And a replat of lots 8 and 9, Block 3, Logan Park, Third Edition, City of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
The recommendations from the Finance Committee were for claims to be paid in the amount of $771,852.76, one manual check in the amount of $98,008.16, payroll liabilities for October 12th, 2018, and October 25th, 2018, in the amount of $649,296.51, for a total of $1,519,157.43.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
They're moved and seconded. Discussion? Mike?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Wex line items on the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we're going to jump Item 11 and 12, and 13. Introduction and Oath of Office, New Riverton Police Department Dispatcher, Kristen Havens. Chief?
Your Honor, Counsel, thank you very much.
Kristen, come on up.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, it is my pleasure to introduce our newest employee. This is Kristen Havens. She's our newest dispatcher. Kristen lives in Lander. She's married with two daughters. She was born and raised in Florida. She has a passion of horses. And how we met was through one of our mounted patrol classes she attended last year, has decided to become a member of the Riverton Police Department family. So she's been here about a month. She's in training. And so if you would, Mr. Mayor, come down and do the oath of office, and let's get her on her way to her fantastic career with the Riverton Police Department.
So will you raise your right hand? Hey, I can solemnly swear or affirm.
I can solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, defend.
I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State Government.
And the Constitution of the State Government.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated in the law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or constantly been violated.
Constantly been violated.
And that I will discharge the duties of the office.
That I will discharge the duties of the office.
Do you have a badge? Go ahead. Will you go put a badge on?
All right.
They didn't practice, by the way, so we'll see how this works out.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing and consideration of a retail liquor license transfer of ownership and location from Barbier Murer, Doing Business as The Cove, to Liquor Holdings LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites. City Clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City Clerk's office received an application for a transfer of ownership and transfer of location of a retail liquor license. The application was submitted by Liquor Holdings LLC, Doing Business as Hampton Inn and Suites. It was formerly held under Barbier Murer, Doing Business as The Cove, and it was non-operational and had been for about a year. The application that was submitted has been certified as complete by the Wyoming Liquor Division. The proper fees have been paid, and the proper notice has been advertised to the public. Mr. Preston, Ryan Preston, is in the office or in the audience tonight as well, if you have any questions for him. Staff is recommending your consideration of the transfer of ownership and transfer of location.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the Council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, since it looks like nobody is interested in speaking on this, I move we close the public hearing. Second.
Moved and seconded that we close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and I declare that the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the retail liquor license transfer of ownership and location.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the liquor license transfer and location transfer.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Lance?
Your Honor, it might be appropriate, this might be a question for...I'm curious, I'm not sure if maybe this is a question that I can ask, but I'm going to ask it anyway, and you can tell me if it's not. But I'm curious if there's any opportunity to give detail as to the planned use, given the facilities at Hampton Inn and Suites, whether a restaurant is planned, if there's a new building coming, or if that's an appropriate question at this time. You can tell me you don't know yet, but...
At this current...
Come to the mic, will you?
As of right now, no. We don't have anything planned. You know, currently, we do offer a service of manager's reception where we do serve beer and wine, but we hire a catering company to come in and provide that for us. Over the last three years, I mean, financially speaking, it was very beneficial for us to actually just go out and try to buy a license, considering the amount of money we've paid a catering company to do it for us. So that's kind of the whole reasoning for it, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Resolution 1381, Wyoming Governmental Investment Fund Authorization, Finance Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. According to the requirements of Wyoming Statute Section 94831, and the City of Riverton Statement of Investment Policy, it is a requirement that the governing body authorize officers or agents of the city to engage in activities with designated investment programs by resolution. The resolution would name the custodian bank as an official depository for the account transactions of city funds, including reserve capital and endowment funds. At the September 19th of the Senior Center Endowment Board, the board provided staff with the request to consider investing funds with the Wyoming Government Investment Funds, and approval of the governing body is necessary in order for us to execute their request. The City of Riverton has invested funds with Wyoming Government Investment Funds in the past, and we do maintain an interest in partnering with them in future investments. In the interest of transparency and in efforts to update the authorized investment agents of the organization, staff is seeking approval of Resolution Number 1381. And I would stand for any further questions.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution 1381.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay. And the idea here, we're going to invest some, we're going to get a better return on investment here, then?
That is correct. The Senior Board is interested in investing in laddered CDs through the funds. They are FDIC insured CDs, and they will be earning a higher rate of return than what their current funds are invested in.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and that passes. Quarterly Fiscal Health Report, Finance Director's Report,
I may need some technical assistance. We'll see if Tim can help me here.
Tim, we may need some help.
I think he's coming.
There he is.
Hearing. Pay no attention to the man behind you. Unless that was him just coming back. Got it. I think it's not sure he's great, so let's do this.
Thank you for your assistance, Kyle. Okay, as part of our standard operating procedure and also part of our fiscal management policies, we do present the governing body with a quarterly fiscal health report of the status of our budgets and where we sit financially per quarter each year. This fiscal year, the governing body of City of Riverton approved a fiscal budget totaling $26,489,253. Excuse me. $26,489,253. So I'm happy to share some of those budget results with you. I'm happy to have such a great audience here tonight. I normally don't have a big audience when I present this report. So for purposes of the audience and our viewers, I'm just going to give a brief description about how our general fund works. The general fund is actually the primary operating fund of the city, and it is used to account for revenues and expenditures of most of the tax-supported activities. And there are several departments that reside within the general fund. Some of those include streets and alleys, the police department, parks and recreation, a lot of the administration, and community development, and the like. So those are the funds that we'll be seeing or that we'll be discussing. Let me go back one. There we go. Okay. All departments of the city are supported by the general fund with the exception of water, wastewater, and sanitation. This year, this fiscal year, the funds allocated to the general fund make up 40% of the city's budget. The revenue sources that support the general fund include taxes, other governmental funding, and fees collected from licenses and permits. The city also receives a direct distribution. We refer to that as supplemental funding, which is derived from over-the-cap mineral royalties and appropriated through the state legislature. These funds are largely used to fund capital projects, equipment purchases, one-time expenditures, and also to support our community service programs. The City of Riverton budgeted to receive a little over $1.3 million in direct distribution funding this year, and we receive those in two separate payments. One of them is in August, and then the other is in January of each year. It's, some of the funding agencies that we support for community projects include Volunteers of America, Our Recreation, for our recreational services, the Paws Animal Shelter, and the Fremont County Goods Marathon Center, and that's just a few of them. The general fund closed the first quarter with a positive balance of $110,335. During this quarter, there were five projects or purchases that were budgeted from supplemental funding that were fully funded. This included the NeoGov software, the HR management software program that was approved, the server backup software system for our IT department, there was a core server data storage expansion project, the purchase of five digital radios for the police department, and then we also transferred funds for the city's portion of the airline minimum revenue guarantee. We paid annual expenses also, including annual property and liability insurance, and software maintenance for all accounting, payroll, utility billing, and other supporting programs. So with that, we are $110,000 to the good at the close of the quarter. Of course, we are constantly chasing a moving target with the way our revenues and expenditures come in, but that is where we landed with that fund. The airport fund is also included in the general fund. However, we do track the revenues and expenditures separately for this fund, and the reason for that is it assists us in providing more accurate financial reporting when it comes to applying for state and federal grants. Generally speaking, the airport capital projects are funded at 93.75% in federal dollars, 3.75% in state funding, and then 2.5% in local funding. Operational revenues are derived from ground lease rentals, aviation fuel tax, car rental income, and landing fees that we receive for air service. The remaining revenues to offset the expenditures are transferred from the general fund. At the close of the quarter, the airport fund was running at a deficit of $6,595. Again, similar to the general fund, and you will see this in all funds as we go through the presentation, we do pay insurance and software maintenance fully upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year. So as we continue to move through the year, you'll start to see those kinds of things balancing out a little bit. The enterprise funds, we use those to account for operations that are... The enterprise funds, we use those to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to regular business enterprises. The fees generated to support the enterprise funds are generally from the rates that our users pay, and they are required, it is required that we set our rates to pay for the cost of operation and maintenance as well as establishing, establishing funds for future capital needs. The costs are primarily paid from user charges, and the total budget of the water fund is three point nine million dollars, basically. And the revenues exceeded the expenditures in the water fund by four hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars in the first quarter. This is largely due to the fact that we received grant and loan reimbursements from the North Federal Project this year while we expended the funds last year. So we closed out our fiscal year with, with needing a reimbursement request for this project, and we just received it this year. So that's part of the reason why that, that budget is so high right now. Additionally, we did see a two percent increase in the water receipts, which was approved through, through the council last year. So that's another reason why you'll see that the funds are so high in the water fund. Expenditures are slightly up right now. Again, this is due to one-time annual payments, and we should see some changes in that as we move further into the budget season. The total budget for the wastewater fund was two million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and our revenues outpaced our expenses by thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So I think we're right on track really with our budget on that. And as with the water fund as well, the wastewater fund did realize revenues of fifty-three thousand dollars for expenses incurred on the North Federal Project last fiscal year. The sanitation fund is probably our healthiest fund at the moment. The total projected budget for the sanitation fund was two million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven thirty-two, and revenues outpaced expenditures by twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then lastly, we have our air service funds. The air service funds are, this is the fund that we use to support air service. The city of Riverton, Fremont County and the city of Lander all contributed to the airline minimum revenue guarantee as well as a few other entities. The city also receives reimbursements from the state of Wyoming Air Service Enhancement Program at sixty percent for this fund. So at the close of the quarter, the air service fund had a positive balance of a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three. Again, it's large because it does include other community contributions, so we will be spending that down throughout the year as well. The average weekly invoice that we paid out of this fund for the quarter was thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. I did look into the average weekly invoice for all of last year, and it was running about thirty-two thousand, five twenty-five. So our invoices are down a little bit, which is good. That's the amount of money that we're paying Key Lime Air and Denver Air Connection to provide that air service to us. So we're seeing a slight decrease in that. So on behalf of the finance department, I just wanted to extend our thanks to each of you for your support during the budget year. We appreciate your guidance and your feedback as, as you represent the best interests of the community. Also wanted to thank Tony for his leadership and also our entire leadership team for their commitment in helping us maintain a healthy budget. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Tim.
What's the status right now of the rate study? Where are we at with that?
We are still, we have provided some information to the company, and we are working on getting a long-term capital improvement plan out to them so that they can better estimate what ours should look like.
How long until we'll have results, I guess?
I, I don't know. I can't. Tony, do you have any thoughts?
Your honor, the original time estimate was somewhere in the six month from, from go, so we're probably still another three or so months out. And I, and I would simply point out that part of the discussion with capital plans, while we do have a capital plan, we've seen it, we've gone through it. We're not looking at a five-year capital plan. We're looking, we're having discussions in the ten-year range at times. So that does take a lot more estimating than, so it does take a little bit of time, but we are working on it. We'd like to get it out to you sooner than the early, the previous timeline, but we'll see how that, we just want to get it right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Anything else for Mia? Thank you, Mia.
All right, thank you very much.
The next item is consideration of Forecast Inc. contract amendment. Public Works Directors Report, please.
Thank you, your honor. On June nineteenth, twenty eighteen, the city of Riverton entered into agreement with Forecast Inc. to provide revenue management services related to Denver Air Connections commercial air service out of Riverton Regional Airport. We actually began services with Forecast Inc. in April of twenty sixteen, and we've stayed with them year over year. What they do is they help us provide the best ticket fares to maximize the revenues on each flight in and out of Riverton. Amendment one establishes a performance incentive for Forecast Inc. to exceed the revenue projections associated with our contract with Denver Air Connections and to reduce the weekly minimum revenue guarantee payments that Mia just referenced. A performance incentive was included in last year's contract with Forecast Inc., however, it was not included in the agreement that I mentioned that was entered into on June nineteenth. The reason is because Sheridan and Fast wanted to renegotiate and reestablish the terms for that incentive plan. It was not working according to the last contract. We've spent some time on that and now feel that it is appropriate to amend the contract and provide a performance incentive to Forecasting for the services they provide. As you read in your packet, the incentive is structured as such. For each one dollar accrued above the revenue projection listed in the contract between Key Lime Air and the city of Riverton, Forecast Inc. will earn a twenty cent performance incentive. The incentive will be capped at three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. It'll be accrued monthly and paid quarterly. There is no budget impact in executing this amendment. The reason being is if Forecast Inc. is able to generate revenues greater than what is in the model that we have for the minimum revenue guarantee, then the savings in the minimum revenue guarantee will pay the incentive. Again, if we exceed the minimum revenue guarantee projection by a dollar, Forecasting gets twenty cents of that dollar. Fast feels that it is a good idea to incentivize Forecast Inc.'s performance because, as you know, the cost of fuel is rising, and it is impacting the operating cost for Denver Air Connection. It is impacting our weekly minimum revenue guarantee payments. By incentivizing Forecast Inc., we're finding ways to positively impact the revenue generated each week and reduce our minimum revenue guarantee payments. As point of information, revenue projections were not exceeded in the months of July, August or September. Therefore, Forecast Inc. is not owed a performance incentive for the first quarter of fiscal year nineteen. And I'll stand for any questions at that point, but staff recommends, along with Fast, that the city council enter into this amendment with Forecasting for the contract. Thank you.
Any questions? Sounds like we're okay, huh? All in favor say aye. Or maybe we need a motion, huh?
Your honor, I'd move we approve the amendment one to the professional services consulting agreement between the city of Riverton and Forecast Inc.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
I thought they were supposed to be doing their best job as there is. Are we, are we double paying them? If they're doing their best job, why do they deserve? I mean, if I'm cleaning your floor to the best, why do I deserve to clean your floor and get it better and get ten cents more or twenty cents more than what I'm presently doing? I'm lowball, at first I lowballed what I was gonna do because I knew I could make more. I mean, I, it sounds like heads I win tells you lose.
Go ahead.
Your honor, I don't know if I can answer that question in the most direct way. I can say that Forecast Inc. does provide their best efforts to exceed and meet revenue projections. One of the reasons why we initially put a performance incentive into the contract for fiscal year eighteen was that was something that one of our funding partners really wanted to see. They wanted to pay for, pay for performance contract with Forecasting, meaning the better you perform, the more money you'll make. So incentivizing their performance. That was one of the reasons why we first put it in, but your question as far as whether or not we're double paying them, I, I don't think I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Now, well, does this enter into the announcement that we had previously with United Airlines? I mean, we're going to be able to check our bags and get off somewhere else without going through security twice in Denver. Won't that affect the sales and also increase? Is, and therefore, we're paying for something that we've obtained, and they didn't project that?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
To answer that question, there will absolutely be an impact with the recently announced interline agreement with United Airlines. However, that announcement actually necessitates this performance incentive all the more. The reason being is because United can restructure how fares are calculated from Denver to Riverton and then Riverton beyond. Meaning if you book a ticket from Riverton to, let's say, Chicago, United Airlines can negotiate how the first leg of that flight is calculated from a revenue perspective. And so when Forecast Inc. put together their revenue projections for the route to establish the minimum revenue guarantee, it was under the assumption that it was a closed circuit, Denver-Riverton. Meaning any revenue generated for that closed circuit would go towards that route. By now expanding that, which is a very positive thing, which will increase ridership, there is a possibility of the structure of how revenue is realized will change. And so that will, in my opinion, require a little bit more effort on Forecast Inc.'s effort, and we want to incentivize them to still meet the revenue projections they originally put together for that closed system for now a very expanded system.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and motion passes. Consideration of UH-1 helicopter static display in Veterans Park. Community Development Directors Report, please.
Thank you, your honor. The Veterans Hall of Riverton has asked the city of Riverton to sponsor a request of the Army Donations Program for a UH-1 Iroquois or Huey static helicopter display. The request must come from the owner of the property, which is the city of Riverton. The Veterans Hall has made and continues to make substantial improvements to the park located behind City Hall adjacent to the Heritage Trail. The installation of a UH-1 static helicopter display would fit the character of the improvements which have been made. Senator Eli Bebaut has expressed support for the endeavor and has pledged to help in any way he can. The UH-1 is fifty-eight feet in length, eight point five feet wide and fifteen feet in height. It will fit. I wondered about that. There is no guarantee. A unit may be available at this time from the Army Donations Program. If after three years, a unit is still not available, we will need to reapply for a display unit. At this time, staff is requesting approval to begin the process or the application process to the Army Donations Program for a UH-1 static helicopter display. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Our District Nine Commissioner with the Wyoming State Veterans is here, Ms. Pat Lawson, as well as many members from our Veterans Hall, if they so choose to speak. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is Jim Martin. I'm, was the chairman for Veterans Hall. I am the chairman for Veterans Park. I am the designer for Veterans Park. This park was a five-year project. As you can see, we're, we're pretty close to, pretty close to being complete in two years. We have another monument that's gonna be installed and dedicated next October. This monument was paid for by the American Legion, twenty-five thousand dollars. So that'll be in addition to, to the park. Along with two, we were looking at putting a mural on the backside of the building here, and that came in at twenty thousand dollars plus. So we've come up with, with a cheaper method of adding a mural to the park, which will be two sixteen-foot walls on the other side of the American flag facing, facing inside the center of the memorial as it is right now. And with the helicopter being placed in the direction right out here, there's a tree. It would be placed in front of that, which would make the entire compass of the park a complete, you know, as you're walking into the park, it would really be a, a really nice asset. We started this project, I started the project on a Huey two years ago, two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and seventeen, we had to put a stop because our bylaws didn't have regulations for a membership to vote. So we had to make, you know, change our bylaws so we could have a membership to vote on things because it was just myself, Pat Lawson, Kent Cook, that were making all the decisions for the park. So now we have, now we have a paid membership, and everyone has, has a chance to vote. So it was just passed, and then in August, we came before the city council, I brought the paperwork and everything to Eric. And so we are, we're asking the city's approval or city's help in getting a UH-1 placed in the, in the Veterans Park. If you've gone out and looked at what we've got us, gotten accomplished so far, I still have more bricks over in the office that needs to be placed, but it, weather's coming on and those bricks don't stick to frozen ground very well, so we're gonna wait till spring to put those, rest those bricks down. We're still selling bricks, and the park is, you know, has come a long, long ways. And I just, all these veterans that are sitting here are responsible for all the work that's taking place out, out in that park. So along with all the donations from the local businesses, if you go out and look up the walkway, all those donate, all those bricks from all the companies, all the businesses, those are five hundred dollar bricks. So we've had great participation from the city, and we continue getting, getting support from the city. Yeah, along with, with all the concrete work. That concrete, what it cost is right around twenty thousand dollars for all the concrete we put in the ground out there, but the concrete companies cut us a big, big chunk of that out, so I'm thankful for the concrete companies also and all the work they've done. Anyway, that's all what I have to say. Pat? You know, we, we brought this before Mr. Bebaut in two thousand and sixteen. We talked to him, he said, oh, let me go. Let me, let me get, see what I can find out. Within a few weeks, we had emails coming in from five different organizations from the United States Army, along with, they do have grant money that will help us with whatever needs we have to do, you know, getting this, this chopper paid for. And Eli Bebaut has offered getting it here. So that's our transportation part of it. We have a one million dollar insurance policy for the park. So I think that would be more than sufficient for anybody, you know, that, and we're looking at, you know, liability and stuff for, for that park. This, the, if we get the helicopter, it will be secured. All doors will be fastened. All blades will be secure. We're not looking to have a motor in this thing. We're just looking for a shell and a prop and a tail rotor. We, we'd like to get, we would like, we have Ron was here. We had a meeting with the gentleman, the commander that flew the UH-1 that Jerry Dick was a door gunner on. And that's part of the reason that park is out there, because Jerry Dick donated all his military benefit money to the three PSOs. And we used all that money, put it in that park. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Jim, thank you so much for the effort that you've made out there. We occasionally have meetings in the back room and look out the window at the park, and, and it's, it's a rare day that we don't see something that looks different. And so we know that you're busy working at. we know that you're busy working at it, and I, I think it's just a marvelous change that's taken place back there, and you're to be commended for your efforts there. We're very grateful for, for the efforts that the veterans folks have made to, to turn that into something really nice and make it a reality. And last year, we had the Arbor Day celebration, and, and we were, we were plenty thankful to have the shelter because it was raining. So it was really nice, and appreciate, appreciate that and, and all the work that you've done there. Now, what do we, what, so do we need a motion to approve this letter request? Is that what we're trying to do tonight? Because I see in the packet, there is a letter signed or ready to sign, I guess, huh? Okay.
There is a draft letter. That's an example of what we-
Okay, okay, all right, okay. So, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve this request for the helicopter.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Thank you. The next item is the website upgrade agreement. The City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council, in for the fiscal year 2019 goals, one of the stated goals that are listed in front of you is the improvement of our, of our website. We've had this conversation at length throughout the planning process, we've, we've done some improvements to our existing site. Our existing site is currently through revise, which this contract is proposed to improve. The, the discussion that we've had throughout the process has a lot to do with how we engage our citizens, how we allow them to communicate with us and how we can communicate with them, how we can provide information and, and essentially work better in, in the world that we live in because of the different lines of communication that exist now that weren't in place 20 years ago. This has been one of those items that we've looked at, looked at, and looked at. We've looked at other service providers, some of those are $25,000 improvements, complete rewrites. They have great functionality, and that is what we largely focused on through this process. Looking at the functionality of the site led us down the road to look at different providers. Oddly enough, as we look, as we got to looking at our existing site and what could be done, it turns out, through demonstration, we found that our existing site has the ability to be upgraded and is in the process of being, I guess, modernized to begin with. But the upgrades to our existing site that are proposed through this contract will do a number of things. One, they will allow citizens the ability to communicate directly and submit requests for, for lack of a better term, a request for service or report a concern. So if there's something that's happening, or there's something that is a violation of code or the like, this actually provides the ability to do that, not only from the, from one's computer at home or a laptop, but also from the phone. It'll also, the other large item that we consistently heard through meetings and discussions was the development of a community website. We understand that other places within our community have, 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 not community website, I'm sorry, community calendar. The, other organizations have calendars, and, and they do a good job. We have the ability through the site to not only provide what the city is doing, to provide other calendars with our partners, for instance, RREC or the Chamber, for Idea Inc. and the like, to, to provide for different, smaller calendars that load to a master calendar. We also have the ability to allow individuals that are having events to submit a request to have something on the calendar. As we look towards trying to make that one place that people go to where all of the information is disseminated, those tended, things become highly functional for us. Those are one, that's one of the, one of the benefits of what we're proposing this evening. The other good part about this is where other sites were looking at $25,000 approximately, this is, this is a $10,000 change. In an effort to essentially streamline this process, because it will take about three months to go from where we're, where you're looking right now to what it will be. I, I took the liberty of speaking with Idea Inc. as our economic development arm because it was a topic of conversation through that board at length. That board volunteered and voted to fund the upgrade that you see in front of you. Because there is an expenditure here and an ongoing agreement, of course, it is, it is to council to approve, but there is no funding, there's no additional funding required from our budget, other than the in and the out that is being provided. I, and if council would like, depending on your time and preference, I have the ability to show you a sample site that we have been looking at, if you would like. Otherwise, we are recommending that council approve the revised contract as presented and direct staff to move forward with getting this implemented. I would stand for any questions.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to consider the, or to adopt, I guess, the revised LLC website contract. So moved.
Second.
A discussion?
Your Honor. Tony, as I was looking at this, that's part of what we're going to be doing is going to be changing up the way that the calendar will be, and it's, it's my understanding from what I was reading here, for Citizens Communications Center apps, revised web calendars, unlimited number with resident event request submission with approval, so people would be able to add things to the calendar as long as it's approved by someone at the city, then? Is that the plan?
Yes, sir. The, there'll essentially be a large button towards the top that says, "Request an Event." Click on that, put in the information that is provided, that, that is required, contact information, when it is, where it is, et cetera. That then generates to, through the approval process internally, to allow whoever is making those approvals, that can all be set on the, by staff. Then, if it meets what we need in terms of our policy, keeping in mind, we'll have to have a policy on it, but it meets our policy, then, and it doesn't do anything we don't want, I mean, there are certain events that you don't want on the community calendar, I'm sure, but then we can say, yes, approve, and it's on there. The only challenge, and I haven't been able to get around this on any other site as well, is that once submitted externally by an individual, that individual would then, if they cancel it or anything else, they'd have to give us some sort of correspondence so we modify it. They cannot request to have it really canceled the same way, but they can get it on there pretty easy.
Lance?
Your Honor. Tony, I'm curious, if, if this really kicks off like it seems to be hoping for, is that a, an amount of staff time that isn't currently being utilized that would, I mean, is this an IT function? Is it a city clerk function? What's the, where's the staffing impact?
Your Honor, the, the interesting part about the way websites are being, are currently being designed for cities this way is that it is no longer solely an IT function. It can be locked down to certain permissions. However, these permissions can be distributed at different levels throughout the organization, including approvals where certain notifications go, so if somebody reports a, a weed violation, that can automatically be funneled over to that department. Each department can have control over the modification and maintenance of their site. So it's no longer one person or two people within our IT department that are controlling all, all of it. It is the, the content and the use is generated within the, or is handled within those particular departments, so everybody will have a little bit of work. It does more, so to, to saddle our IT department with just that would be a little much, because there's a lot, you'd be fielding requests and you'd be, but by distributing it, we believe that we can, we can lessen that impact while still raising our service level appropriately.
Jim?
And I would think some of that, for example, if there's the ability to, on the website, do things that would normally require a phone call, some of that will save up some staff time, so even though this might require some more staff time, for example, in terms of reviewing, the calendaring, that sort of thing, some of it will save some, I would think, if we're not having to have as many, field as many phone calls.
Your Honor, yes, I'll take one of the examples I just used. We talked about weeds, that's always a common conversation. One of the things that happens, somebody reports it, we have to send somebody out, get a picture of it, that picture has to come back, and we have to document it. What happens when our site allows individuals to show, to provide pictures at that particular time and, and so it's date stamped, and here, we already have that. It actually can reduce some of that, some of that legwork that's going on. It doesn't mean we don't have to verify, but it, it can help our processes a little bit.
So I did get a comment, a concern expressed that we're having, we're putting together a calendar in competition with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, Your Honor, we've heard, I've had that conversation as well. Two items. One, the Chamber of Commerce is a membership-driven organization. The idea that we have talked about throughout different meetings, I was at a, I was at a, the Boys and Girls Club meeting, it was called at one time, I believe, Councilman Bailey was there, there was a number of other individuals, and it, it's not simply about businesses, it's about events that happen in town, events that are going on, and it's a place, it's a little, it's a little bit similar in the way that we put together the map, the Google map, and we wanted to say, here are the things that are going on in our community. It may not just be a purely chamber-driven item. We also did approach the Chamber at one point, a couple times, and, and asked if they were interested in partnering it for the cap, for the website redesign. At the time, they had already started going down a road, and I was told, we're not terribly interested in that at that point. It's, that was quite a few months ago, as we had started this process. But I also understand that as a membership-driven organization, it's kind of hard to put everybody's information, not just your members. As a community calendar, it seems appropriate that we don't have those restrictions. We can say, there's an event going on in the park, there's a street closure, and here's the event going here, here's the location, the library is doing this. The other item with that is it also allows for us to provide particular organizations that we want to have access to their own calendar. So let's take RREC. RREC has, they do have a series of events, and they can maintain their own calendar if they like. They can also look at ours, link to ours, and have their own small calendar if we allow that. The nice thing about that is by giving one person or two people within that organization access to just that, they can control and modify their calendar with the events, the recreation events that happen within a, within the city at any given time. We don't have to keep managing that for them. Now, I'll be completely candid, we have not had that conversation with RREC if they want one, but it does give us the ability to do that. We also know that, that as the, as this starts out, we are going to have to spend a little bit of time populating that with events that are going on within the commu, public events that are going on in the community, to try to get that momentum going. But ultimately, we see this as being a very, almost self-sustaining piece of work that people can start linking to all the time. Additionally, it allows you to, there's an, what is called an iCal function, or an iCalendar function, that allows you to take a particular event or calendar and link it on, and put those events onto your phone through your calendar. So I'm going to take this event, I'm just going to pull it into my calendar, and so now it exists there. You don't have to take every event, you can just take singular ones.
Just?
Just.
Just pull it over there?
Yep.
Okay.
With a button.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed, Tony. Okay. Rendezvous city Wi-Fi discussion. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm enjoying tonight, I get to put my IT hat on, and I never get to wear that. First off, I'd like to start, the information that you have is largely provided by Tim Hugas, our IT Director, and he's done an exceptional job of looking into this. It went, the, the initial request for this was, hey, can you look kind of how much this would cost? And Tim, and his team went way above and beyond, as you can see by the pictures provided to you, and tested the feasibility of this at a level that I really didn't expect and was very impressed by. Starting out, I really loved the free Wi-Fi comic where the two men stuck on the island, put up a sign that says, "Free Wi-Fi," and all of a sudden, the ships show up, and that's about what, you know, you think is going to happen, and to some extent, it does. During the fiscal year 19, we keep going back to this, fiscal year 19 goals that drive us, one of the things that we talked about and has denoted is researching community Wi-Fi. That can mean a whole slew of things, and how far that extends. As we looked at it, I think San Antonio was one of the places that I had been, I know that Councilman Gode had been to, that they do it along their River Walk, and that is kind of what led to the genesis of the presentation that you have before you. It's not terribly feasible or cost-effective to do it community-wide for any number of reasons, but a lot of the communities that do it, do it, look at it in terms of specific locations. In our case, we've put it into two phases. One potential phase is through city park. You have that coverage map that is provided to you, and that can, along with cost estimates. The second phase, or the alternative phase, or another phase that could be done, is to push it up and down Main Street. The idea being that where you get the most foot traffic, where you get the most recreation, where you get the most people moving about, that, those types of areas tend to be focused on more than a little bit. As such, those were the areas that are provided to you, and the explanation, without going into it, because I'm afraid that I'll have to take my IT hat off if I say too much wrong from what was written here, but what we have done is provided a general overs, overview of what that could look like, and also, if going down to the cost centers, what it would actually cost, or as a general estimate, phase one, of course, being the park, and we do have some of that infrastructure in place. Keeping in mind that the internet service and IT support annual is approximately $2,400 on phase one, so that is an ongoing yearly expense. But the, the charge for staff at this year was to provide information that council could consider and look into as part of ongoing, as part of ongoing expenditures, capital improvements, park programs through the parks, through our Parks Committee, and as such, we wanted to provide that as quickly as possible. The current year does not provide for this within our, within, within our existing budget. As such, it is not proposed to you to approve this evening, but rather to consider and provide either a request for additional information now or in the future. With that being said, I would stand for any questions you might have, and likely, I may ask Tim Hugas to join us if they get too terribly far over my head.
Any questions? Go ahead, Lance.
Your Honor, Tony, this is, I think, perfect. I mean, as far as giving us the right information to really start a serious conversation, and I know Tim's probably listening via the TV, so I do appreciate his comprehensive work. There's a lot of great detail in here. I have already, based on the Facebook announcement of today's agenda, had some feedback that was almost entirely positive on this concept, so I think we're definitely headed in an interesting direction if we were to choose to move forward on a project like this, and I love the idea of connecting it to the Parks, you know, with the Parks Committee having hotspots within the Parks and expanding to like a downtown area. I just, I think we're, you definitely hit it right on the head, so did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Kyle?
Lance, do they have a hotspot up at CWC?
Yes. Yep.
And, and how extensive is that?
It pretty much just covers right at the campus edges. I, I don't know that you, I've never really tested it beyond the business park, once you leave like College View and east of there, but the campus has got a pretty reliable signal anywhere on the campus. So from housing, which would be Moorfeld all the way to- So from housing, which would be Moorfeld all the way to the highway, and from Hill Street all the way to College View.
So that's bigger than our park?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is to go back up to the discussion, to the executive session point, that was item...
Did we change?
Seven.
Your Honor, I would move that we convene into executive session.
Second.
Okay. So let's see, so the purpose of this is to consider litigation, which our governing body is or may be a party in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A3. I note at the end of our meeting agenda, there's another executive session to deal with personnel. Can we handle those at the same time?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, and so we'll add that session, that executive session in to deal with personnel. And that is considering the appointment employment right to practice dismissal complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2, and the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A10. So we had a motion from Mike. And was there a second?
Me.
Kyle. Okay. So second from Kyle to go into executive session, is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We invite Tony and Rick Sawyers to attend with us.
Your Honor, may we invite?
Megan?
Kristen Watson.
Kristen?
Yes, sir.
Kristen wants to come too. Okay. All right, good. All right. I don't anticipate this to last very long, so we should be back out in another, I don't know.
Two hours.
Two hours, something like that, no. We do have a, yeah. So, no, I'm thinking maybe 10 minutes will cover it. Regular session.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we reconvene. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and we are reconvened at 8:33. Action items are, okay, the, so the next, I'll, I'll, let's see. Yeah, so the next item on the agenda then is, is ordinance number 18-013, third and final reading habitually intoxicated persons.
Your Honor, I move that we postpone this item until the first meeting in December.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we postpone this item to the first meeting in December. Discussion. Tim?
Your Honor, I just want to, I think, in the interest of people who have been sitting around and maybe waiting because they want to know about this, a little bit about why. We received, in terms of feedback on this, I think, last week, a letter from the American Civil Liberties Union, ACLU wanting to talk about this. They had some thoughts, feedback on it, and I think before we proceed to the third reading on this and having the possibility of this becoming an ordinance, I think we ought to do our due diligence and look into that and make sure we're doing things that are not going to get us into legal trouble, let's just put it that way.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 18-014, third and final reading, serving prohibited to habitually intoxicated persons.
Your Honor, I again move that we move this, postpone this item until the first meeting, regular meeting in December as well.
Second. Been moved and seconded to postpone this to the first meeting in December. Any other, anything else to say about it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's postponed to the first meeting in December. Okay. I don't think we have any action, any other action from our discussions. So we have council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Mr. Godey, have you got anything for us tonight?
I have one thing, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to attend an event last evening. It's called Live Local, Work Local. It's a joint effort with the University of Wyoming and the local chamber and Idea Inc. to bring UW students to communities in Wyoming to look at living options after graduation and really kind of sell the different areas throughout the state that might be attractive to them based on their major. These are all students that are close to finishing their degrees and they had an opportunity starting Sunday evening through the entire day yesterday to go on different tours, see different area businesses, and see how they might be able to connect their degrees to our local community. And I know that the Chamber, Idea Inc., and UW are really excited about continuing this and making it kind of an ongoing thing. And it was a really interesting event. Tony and I were both able to attend, got a nice free meal out of the deal. Kind of the, one of the unique things was is they attempted to serve almost entirely all locally raised produce, meat, side dishes, which was kind of a unique thing as well. So just a little effort, I think, that certainly, well, maybe not a little effort, but the Chamber and Idea Inc. and the university are doing and just wanted to really send out my appreciation for that.
You bet. Tim, have you got anything for us tonight?
I had the opportunity to attend the Save Our Riverton Hospital meeting, public meeting that we had yesterday. I had to think back for a minute as to when it was. It was a good opportunity. The whole idea behind it was that people were organized into groups with facilitators with the idea being they wanted to get feedback from the community as to what were their experiences with health care in the county and their thoughts as to how things should proceed going forward. Very, very good event, I thought, very helpful. The feedback that was given, I think, is going to be going into figuring out the solutions going forward. And as I understand, at the meeting in December, which, I know when that is, I think.
10th.
The 10th? I'm so glad I had my calendar sitting over here. The meeting that's in December on the 10th will be at the same location, St. Margaret's. At that point, they're going to try to have a plan going forward. So that is where things are at there, I think. The most important thing, I think, going forward is just to make sure that folks are filling out the survey if they haven't already. It's easy to access that. Do not fill out two of them. I know that goes without saying, but filling out that survey and then the idea is, is to take that information and then figure out what will be the next steps. So that's all I have to report there.
Mike?
I attended the force committee meeting yesterday, which they went over the projects that were sort of getting finalized for this year, and they've all gone very well. And then they have started the process of looking at the future projects that we would be looking into to do next year, getting, sort of prioritizing them on which ones would be the best ones to move forward on, begin the engineer, you know, the engineering and cost estimating of what those projects are going to cost so that we can hopefully get some projects out to bid early in the year, which was very successful this last year in getting us some very good bids that came in under engineers' estimates. And, and we've sort of found out that the earlier we get those bids out, the better numbers we're getting from what we've seen. And so we're going to try to get a good list of projects that we want to look at next year, what the rough estimate are so we can look at our budget, look at how much those projects are expected to cost, and get some bids out early so that we can, again, have a good full summer of construction in improving our roads around Riverton. So it was very productive. In the previous meeting, we did a survey and went around and looked at the entire projects that were completed this year and the ones that we're looking at for next year to see sort of which ones were in the most need and which, you know, higher and lower traffic areas and all of that kind of stuff. So again, that committee puts a lot of work into figuring out those projects, and I think they've done a wonderful job, and we've seen a lot of improvements in the city from that fund, so thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, you got anything for us?
Chamber of Commerce, still looking at moving their office to a better location. They were more interested in, there were two locations. One was the commercial property located across the street from the park, and the other comment was somewhere in the park. And they wanted to know if there was some type of restrictive covenant with putting their office on the corner of the park. Since the property was given to the city of Riverton, somebody made the statement that there was a restrictive covenant on the property. Central Bank and Trust was going to look in into that, but I was just wondering if we had any idea on that.
I could comment, well, I don't know anything about city park, but JC Park, I can remember about seven or eight years ago, there was some issue there with a subdivision where for one party wanted to, to, they were going to donate half the width of the road, and they wanted to take the other half of the width of the road out of JC Park. And we quickly determined that there were, that there were covenants on that, that the entire park had to be used for recreational purposes. And that was, that was the limitations placed on it by Wayne Majors when he donated to the city. And so we felt after we looked at that, that we couldn't do that without putting the park at risk.
Your Honor, I believe we can look into it. I, inherently, I don't think there's a restriction on the use of city property, but there may be covenants, as you denoted, so we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Rebecca?
Splash pad work is done for the year, so that's good. In the spring, they'll complete the project. Parks Committee, me, we met on the 29th of October. We just discussed Rhine Park, Teeter Park, and Monroe Park. We also discussed Stock Dock's efforts to get donations for their dog waste bins. They want 12, their goal is 12 by the spring, so I think they have nine as of right now. So if you wanted to donate to that, you'd contact the Stock Dock. It's $300 initially and then $100 a year after that. And then with the Solutions Committee, we're still, I'm still working on the rendezvous games, getting it well enough to present to council for approval to hold those games twice a year. That's all I got.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of items. We are beginning an IBC review and adoption process. That is underway. The International Building Code is reviewed by, by staff and then run through a process prior to council, council seeing it. So we will be working on that as we speak. Obviously, there'll be a fair amount of discussion, and I do not have the, the proposed review schedule for council as it hasn't gone all the way through yet, but we will update you accordingly. So council understands there's a possible consideration of a BRC grant application at the second meeting this month. Where staff is working with Idea Inc. on notice and application documents, so that may be an item that is coming before you for your consideration. We'll provide additional information as it, as it is finalized. As you know, with any business ready community grant, it has to be sponsored by a governmental agency such as ourselves. So we will be talking about that very soon. Couple small items. Our airport board meeting will be November 16th at 8:00 a.m. at City Hall. November 16th is the last day of yard waste pickup. Public information is going out, but we wanted to make sure everybody knows that. That is ceasing. I would like to congratulate a couple people. One, we've talked a little bit tonight about IT and how, how we interact with our community. One of those ways we've talked about is Facebook. It's, there's a lot of ways to figure out how well you're doing. We, when we started out with, in about June 1, a different way of doing Facebook, a little more aggressive approach, we had about 500, about 500 likes, right about there, I think. Megan set a goal of hitting 1,000 likes by November 1, and on November 1st, she hit 1,000. I wish I could predict the budget half as well as she predicts the likes she'll get on Facebook, but this is a thou, it's, getting the message that we're trying to send out there is very obvious in her efforts. So I wanted just to extend our appreciation for her good work. And finally, I'd also like to extend some appreciation to all of, to all of staff, everybody within our, within our organization, because we're just finishing up the audit for this year. Auditors were here. Currently, it's looking like we have no findings. Congratulations to me on her good work, on all of our staff's good work for the diligence that they show and how we spend our money. So that's a great job, and it's a lot of work, thanks to everybody for what they've done. At this point, I have no additional items for you. If you have any questions, I'd stand for those.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think I have any comments tonight. So we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned at 9:00 or 8:50.